All right, I'm gonna start by conducting roll call. Subcommittee member Sarmiento. Is that on yet?
He's on.
Subcommittee member Lopez.
I'm here.
And Subcommittee member Penalosa.
President, how's it going, everyone?
Hey, sorry about that, Angie, I'm here, I just had myself on mute, so.
Oh, okay. All right, so in addition to the Subcommittee members, joining us today is Leslie Palmer and Dan Maldonado from H R Holland and Knight. We also have Casey Elliott from Townsend Public Affairs and Tony Cardenas, League of California Cities. Now is the time for the members of the public to speak on any items. And I don't, members of the public may comment on action items by calling into the Zoom link, which is six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three and entering the meeting ID, which is eight seven four three nine six three four two six seven and pound. At this time, I don't see any hands raised. So we're gonna proceed, and I did not receive any email comments as well. So the first item on the agenda today is item number one, which is the election of the Chair and Vice Chair for this Legislative Affairs Subcommittee. So, members, I'm gonna open up the election of the officers at this time. If you can please state the name of the nominee by way of a motion and then a second or, if there's more than one nominee, then we can vote for the most current position first. So is there a motion?
Madam Secretary, can I ask you a question? Could, can we take this like as, do we do this as individual votes on both the Chair and Vice Chair? Or can we just bundle them?
Unless there is any disagreements, you can do, you can bundle both. You can nominate and do second for both Chair and Vice Chair.
So I was gonna nominate Councilmember Lopez's Chair and Councilmember Penalosa as Vice Chair.
Okay, so we each have, is there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Lopez as Chair and Mayor Sarmiento as Vice Chair.
Guess I'm gonna be doing all the work, just kidding.
I guess you're stuck, you got the short, the short end of the stick, so.
But I'll accept the mayor's motion, if, I mean, that's, that's fine, thank you, Mayor.
There you go.
Okay, so then I'll do a roll call vote for the nomination of the Chair first. So, motion for Councilmember Lopez to be nominated as Chair. Subcommittee member Sarmiento.
Yes.
Subcommittee member Lopez.
Yes.
Subcommittee member Penalosa.
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries for unanimous vote to elect Councilmember Lopez as the new Chair, effective immediately to serve one year. And now for, we'll do the second roll call vote for the nomination of Vice Chair. We have a motion for Subcommittee member Penalosa. I will call the roll call vote, so Councilmember or Subcommittee member Sarmiento.
Yes.
Subcommittee member or Vice Chair Lopez.
Yes.
Subcommittee member Penalosa.
Part of me wants to say no, but I guess I'll say yes.
Okay, so the motion carries with unanimous vote to elect Councilmember Penalosa as the Vice Chair immediately, serving, effective to serve one year. And so now I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our new Chair, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let me just get the agenda right out in front of me. So, we are gonna move on to the business calendar. And the first item on the business calendar, we just did, we can move on to the second one, which is receive state and federal legislative updates. We're gonna be receiving a federal update from Holland and Knight. So Leslie Palmer and Dan Maldonado, whenever you're ready. See everyone, and our colleague Lisa Barkovic is joining us as well. Thank you. So feel free to lead us in that update whenever you're ready. Wonderful. First of all, congratulations, Councilmember Lopez, on your new chairmanship role. So excited to work with you, nice to see everyone. I'm gonna start with a couple of just quick updates to give you a snapshot of what's happening in DC. And then I wanna dive a little bit deeper into really what we're seeing around the infrastructure, bipartisan infrastructure law rollout, as well as the new guidance that recently was released by the Treasury Department on the state and local fiscal recovery funds. So just quick snapshot for where we are at the moment. The big item right now is, is getting through FY22 appropriations. And as you all know, the federal fiscal year actually starts October 1st. So we're already well into FY22. And Congress has been trying to negotiate an omnibus package, meaning they're gonna push all the bills together for appropriations and try to pass one large bill. Right now, we're functioning off of a continuing resolution. And we're going to need another one to get through, to, in order to give Congress more time to work on this final. The House last week passed a short-term continuing resolution through March 11th. And the Senate is about to blow suit either tonight or early tomorrow morning. After that, there seems to be a lot of momentum towards working towards a deal, which is great. And so they are, they've agreed on top-line numbers. We're now waiting to see for individual bills and, and kind of how they, how they distribute funding. But, you know, why this is important to San Ana is, you know, this is all of the programs that the city relies on, whether that's CDBG funding, transportation funding, a number of different pieces that, that the city gets dollars from the federal government is tied into this funding package. It's even more important this year because some of the funding, not all, but some of the funding for the bipartisan infrastructure law that passed in the fall is also tied into this bill. And so it's actually made it a little bit difficult to roll out some of the programs because, again, the agencies have been waiting for this bill to pass. So this is a pretty, pretty important one this year. And again, we're expecting that by March 11th, mid-March, they're going to have, they're, they're gonna be able to reach a deal. They'll immediately pivot to FY23 and to start working on that bill. And that, of course, is gonna be a more difficult bill to work on because the elections are gonna be happening in November. We'll see what happens, but as you all know from reading the news, it's not looking particularly good at the moment for House Democrats. And so there's a good chance that the House will flip and become under Republican control. That'll delay the FY23 process even further. One piece I do wanna flag is that we expect that they're going to do earmarks again this year. And, you know, we'd really encourage the city to start now pulling projects together for, to, to, to look at potential earmark projects. Last year was the first year that they did that process after nearly a decade of, of being, of being dormant, and it was a pretty chaotic process. You know, we expect that this will be a fast process. Once they get going, it's gonna be a lot of hurry up and wait. So they'll, they'll set these really tight deadlines. We'll need to have our projects ready to go, to, to apply. And then, and then we're gonna wait for several months while they figure out what they're gonna do on the bill. The reason I think it's really important this year for the city to apply is, this may be the last year that we have earmarks for a while. We'll have to see what Republicans do, but previously, Republicans had been, you know, more anti-earmark. We'll see, there's been, there's been a softening of the stance for some folks. But this could be the last time that we have earmarks for a while. So seems worthwhile for the city to, to put some projects forward. These are projects typically, by the way, in the, you know, $1.5 million and under range. And the nice part, and you know, as Lisa and Dan can elaborate in a moment, but the nice part about earmark, these earmark projects is, you know, sometimes there's, there's a little more flexibility than you see under typical federal grant programs. Another piece, just to flag through all that I mentioned previously, is that the Treasury Department released their final guidance on the state and local fiscal recovery funds. No huge changes there, there's some slightly easier tabulations that they've made on revenue loss. They've tried to, they've actually increased flexibility on how some of the dollars can be used, particularly for housing, which is very interesting. The second tranche of funds, will be the final tranche of funds, will be coming out sometime, we think, in May. And so, you know, I would just note that the administration is really eager to highlight innovative ways that cities are spending these dollars and the impact that they're having. So if we have good stories to tell, really, and they're looking at the granular level, like, you know, how we made a difference in the life of John Smith. You know, we should, it would be great to get those so that we can flag them for the White House because they're really looking to elevate those kinds of things. Finally, on the bipartisan infrastructure law. Again, I mentioned some of the funding is tied up with FY22 appropriations, but some of the funding was actually appropriated in the law. And several agencies have been moving forward quickly to get the dollars out the door. So DOT has released a NOFO for the RAISE Grant Program, that was previously known as the Build Grant and, and the Tiger Grant Program. So that, that is out now. They've also been releasing notices for comment. Most recently, they were requesting comment on the state EV charging program. This is funding that was going to the states for EV charging. They also have asked for comment around the state dollars for broadband. And so there'll be separate opportunities to comment on, on both the EV charging program that's going to be, where competitive EV charging program, as well as the competitive digital equity program as well. So we'd really encourage the city to provide comment on, to help structure those grant programs. You know, just as a way to, to try to help shape some of those regulations. And so, you know, we expect to see, once, once the appropriations bill is passed, we expect to see additional grants coming out. I'll note that, that we've, we've sent along to the city a number of really helpful documents. One is a PowerPoint that we put together. The White House also released a very detailed guide, funding guide, for the infrastructure law for programs that are of interest to local governments. We also sent along something that we had received from the White House. They actually gave a more detailed breakdown of timing. So when they expect to get, have, release some of these so that the city can plan for that. And so, you know, we're trying to keep as much information flowing as possible. I'll just mention, just in terms of what we're seeing across the board from other cities. You know, a number of cities have formed interdepartmental working groups to really start to think about projects that they want to apply for and make sure that there's a coordinated approach happening. Also seeing that happen in some communities at a regional level, where they're pulling in their authority or, you know, their metropolitan planning organization as well to try to coordinate within the region. And so, you know, all of those things, I think, are really great ways because this is gonna be, this is not just funding for this year. You know, the infrastructure bill is obviously a five-year bill. So these are gonna be dollars that are gonna be flowing out for the next couple of years. So a lot of opportunity. But Dan, Lisa, please jump in if any, if I missed anything. Hey, Dan, you're muted.
Sorry. The only thing I would add, it was very comprehensive, Leslie, is on, as part of, of the process on infrastructure, you know, there's a number of very helpful webinars going, will be going on, have been going on. And certainly in the broadband, which the city has expressed a strong interest in. There's a series of webinars particularly focused on the Digital Equity Act portion of the program. So, you know, it's something to get our, our teeth into, to make sure that when the state begins to make decisions of what cities are going to be able to, to tap into those resources. It's important that San Ana's had its say and has its strategy together. So I think that, that's an important aspect of that. The Legislative Committee is very strategic at a time when all of these opportunities are on the table now. And that, you know, when the decision is made to pursue something, a lot of resources, in terms of staff commitment and, and effort is gonna be very important in order to, to be able to have an impact, especially on the competitive grant side. The only other thing I would add is just on the, on the regulatory side. And you may have had this as part of the, the summary coverage, Leslie, is the public charge. The administration has now made it very clear that they are going back to the original definition on public charge. So it, it, it basically eliminates any vestige of what Trump had tried to do in terms of adding non-cash assistance requirements in order to be able to, you know, to, to register for residency or green card.
You, Daniel, Subcommittee member Sarmiento, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's good to see you, Leslie and Dan and Lisa. You know, thank you for that overview. And I appreciate you sort of in the presentation, seeing how it relates to San Ana, right? I mean, so we have these really broad federal bills and monies, but to the extent we can, you know, narrow our focus and tailor it to what opportunities we could, you know, we could access, you know, that's really helpful. And, you know, on the earmarks, giving us an idea of what the amount is, you know, about a million and a half and less, for those, that's really, really helpful. And the broadband discussion is one that we always continue to, to have. One of the things I would suggest, and maybe this is more for staff, for, for staff on our end, is for the committee's benefit, just understanding what projects we do have, sort of, you know, and maybe Nabil, you can jump in when you, when you want, sort of what projects we can all be supporting, right, and championing and making sure that we get a sense of, whether it's a great separation by the train station, whether it's, you know, whether it's, you know, something else, maybe it's, you know, something by the Discovery Cube and that, you know, River Trail or whatever. But, you know, so we can kind of focus in on what is it that we all want to get behind? And, and maybe, you know, during these meetings, what might be helpful is just some progress reports. And, you know, have, have we received everything? You know, have, have our advocates received everything? And, you know, where is it in committee if it is? But I think those, you know, that would make these discussions really, you know, helpful because that way we can just see, you know, if we're hitting on my, our milestones throughout. So I would just say, you know, maybe what we could do is incorporate a list, maybe, of things that the committee could take a look at and we could report out to the council and just demonstrate progress, you know.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. We will, we do have lists and we have developed lists in the past. So we will do that and we'll share it with the committee coming back and with, with, with our lobbyists too. And I know Daniel has few lists that we've done from Public Works and I think community developments have some more too. So we will develop those lists for you and over them with you.
Thank you. The only, the last thing I would say, just for our folks at the federal, you know, is, you know, we received, obviously, our first bundle of rescue plan money and that was really helpful and thank you all for your help. We know it was formula-based, but, you know, it took a lot of work on your end. It was, you know, extremely vital. We'll be, you know, expecting our second bundle sometime later this year. But I guess, just one kind of specific question. I know that there had to be a nexus to COVID, you know, for those monies to be, you know, restricted and limited. We're having some issues with our downtown and our merchants being impacted by interruption as a result of construction that's going, going on there for the, for the streetcar. You know, I don't know how fluid things are, but, you know, is there any appetite on behalf of Treasury, on behalf of, you know, you know, the feds to be able to allow us to maybe flex some of those dollars and show that there's an economic recovery component to, you know, to COVID recovery? But I know I reached out to our congressman and, and so his response, I think, was, hey, can you, you know, why don't you use some of the ARPA money? And, and we, you know, my sort of instinct was, well, we can't because it's restricted to, you know, just COVID recovery and pandemic recovery, not really to impacts from construction. But I don't know how loose maybe those, those guidelines are getting or whether they're still very rigid and strict. So just, just a question that you can maybe let us know because we're having a lot of, a lot of impacts to our, you know, our merchants downtown, which, you know, just came out of COVID and, and, you know, closures and restrictions. And so everybody was looking forward to things and now we've got construction going on. So we're just trying to find them some, you know, sources of funds.
Mayor, I think it's such a great question. And so I think we can do a deeper dive. I will say, in the guidance, they've really tried to be very broad and flexible. And so, yes, it's a, it's a nexus to COVID, but it's a, it can be a very broad nexus to COVID. And I think it's, you know, they're, they're open to interpretations of what that means. And so, you know, I think, I think there are ways to, to look at that specifically and, and to, to work on that. But let us, let us take a deeper dive and, and pull out some of the guidance for you.
I think you do have an emergency declaration that we're still under. So the question is, you know, whether there is COVID-related aspects from the current experience going into the construction that's going on so that it's sort of a continuum of impact that you, that you have, but.
And thank you for that question, Subcommittee member Sarmiento. I, I was wondering the same thing, Leslie, in terms of the specific pots of money for FY22. Just because, as you said, we don't know what is gonna happen with FY23. But Subcommittee member Penalosa, I see your hand up. And then after you, I know that Lisa from H and K also has a comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lopez Esteban. My spanglish is coming out here. I just wanted to say that I agree with, with the mayor and, and wanted to double down on what he just said. And I think he's on to something and being able to see the flexibility of these funds. I know that, that just in my, you know, trying to creatively think right now, my wheels were turning. The, the merchants, the downtown merchants are, are struggling and, and these funds are earmarked for, you know, for COVID-related expenses. But, you know, there, there's this project that was directly affected in, in, in construction delays because of COVID. You know, it, it's now, has an additional two-year timeline versus the original completion date of this year. So I think there, there's ways there that we could be creative and try to find a, a way that we could use some of these funds for these merchants. So wholeheartedly agree, Mayor Sarmiento. I think, just wanted to voice my support for that, to be able to look at that, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, did you still wanna?
Yeah, I'll just share, just quickly, just building off of what Leslie and Dan have mentioned. The one last thing I'll, I'll add to what they said that we need to be working towards is with the omnibus appropriations bill that will be signed into law hopefully sometime in March, we are going to then see an influx of grant opportunities from the administration that are just not even related to the IIJA. So your normal annual Department of Justice grants, you know, EPA grants, they're going, those funds will also be becoming available between mid-March and late into May. So we just wanna be talking about too, about those annual opportunities. For example, the city has typically applied for a COPS hiring grant and has been successful in that realm. And so we just wanna make sure that we, we are working with you all on that as well.
Thank you, thank you for mentioning that. I'm particularly interested in the EPA grants. Do you know if there's a list of grants that are gonna come out in March that you can share with us?
Yes, we do, so we can go ahead and send that to you.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that. Okay, so thank you, everyone from Holland and Knight. We're gonna move on to Townsend. So Casey, if you wanna lead us, you know, on the update on the funding opportunities for local governments, provide background on the update on Assembly Bill 485 and any state legislative bills.
Good afternoon, everyone, Casey Elliott with Townsend Public Affairs. I think I'll just pick up kind of on, on where Dan and Leslie and the HK team left off and talk about budget. Real briefly, the governor in January introduced his January budget proposal, which kind of kicks off the FY22-23 budget process here at the state level. While I won't go into elaborate detail on, on all the myriad of items that are contained within the budget, just a few things to note. The governor's budget does propose $213 billion in general fund spending, which is about, up about a percent and a half from last year. So the state still has a, has a, a, a growing economy. And part of that is, it anticipates a $45.7, $45.7 billion budget surplus, of which 20 and a half billion of that is discretionary. So again, the, the state, you know, revenues are continued to project on an increased trajectory. The receipts that have been received by the Department of Finance so far are above projections. So there's opportunity in the May revise for that to be upwardly adjusted. As we kind of look at, you know, some of the key programs that the city might benefit from, there's certain areas, obviously, the Governor Newsom continues to put a focus on housing and homelessness, proposing two and a half billion, or excuse me, two billion in each of those categories. While there is funding from last year, HHAP funding for homelessness, which the city gets a direct allocation. Last year, you may recall, that was a multi-year program. So the city will continue to get an allocation from that. The funding this year is, is proposed to be geared more towards getting people off the streets and treatment, those wraparound services, as opposed to just facilities. So there'll continue to be a healthy conversation on that. I know there continues to be conversations about permanent and longer-term sources of funding for homelessness and housing, including extending the HHAP. So those will continue to be discussed in the coming, in the coming weeks. Also, of kind of new, new end of interest, the governor's budget proposes $255 million for local public safety grants. This is largely to combat the, the increase in retail theft crime rings that we saw particularly in, in last fall, but, but all throughout the year. It's noticeable in that the state hasn't really done competitive kind of law enforcement, public safety grants in, in a while. So seems to be a lot of momentum building behind those proposals. So we may see additional funding there, but good to get some funding for frontline law enforcement. Also, just overall with there being such a, a healthy projected budget surplus, it's likely, again, that the, the state will look at doing earmarks in, in this budget. You know, the city was successful in securing a $4 million budget earmark last year. We've talked with staff about, you know, again, putting to projects together and communicating those with our legislators for opportunities. The final earmarks tend to go in at the very last minute in June. And after the May revises out and the revenue levels are known. But getting in and, and similar to on the federal side, getting those, those lists and those projects communicated over to our representatives so they can be working with the Budget Committee will be key. So we'll continue to work with, work with staff on, on those items. Overall, the process, again, we're, it's much quicker than the federal side, but we're still relatively at the beginning of the budget process. So oversight hearings going on until the May revise and then the final budget will be done in mid-June. As far as kind of more current funding opportunities, we're really looking at agencies and departments starting to push out many of the programs that were funded as part of the current year budget. We've been working with staff to provide a monthly update of the various state-level grant funding programs that the city may be interested in. So I won't go, you know, through those in, in detail with you other than to say there's a broad category of things that may be of interest to the city. Looking in kind of the next, just the next two months ahead, there's cannabis education and enforcement grants coming through the CHP, recreational trails programs through the Department of Parks and Rec, Transit and Inter-City Rail, which may be some opportunities for the streetcar and related programs. There's a library infrastructure grant coming out, which will be good. That's been, it's been a while since, on the state level, we saw funding available, available for, for library improvements and upgrades. And then the last one, kind of looking on that, on that short-term horizon, there's a new community access grant that's upcoming, which again, will provide funding opportunities for, for after-school and other use. new community access grant that's upcoming, which again will provide funding opportunities for for after-school and other youth geared programs. So again, all of those are are coming in the next two months or so. We'll continue to work with staff to provide them with updated lists of of the longer-term opportunities. And then as more grant programs get nofa dates and those types of things, we'll continue that information. As we move over to the bill side, briefly on AB four eighty-five by Assemblymember Winn, that bill was a two-year bill that was introduced last year. So it was subject to a January thirty-first deadline to move out of the House of Origin, which it did. So that bill is has been moved and is over on the Senate side now. That bill deals with hate crime reporting. So currently, the city provides monthly updates to the State Department of Justice on on hate crime statistics and and various hate crimes. And then the state DOJ essentially collects that information and posts it annually. So the information that the city posts, by the time it shows up on state websites, it can be, you know, twelve to eighteen months old, a little a little stale. So Assemblymember Winn's bill would require the city, all cities, to take the monthly information that you currently provide to the Department of Justice and provide that on your own website and update that monthly. So no, no changes to the data collection or the processing on the city end. However, there would be some new posting requirements. The bill moved through the Assembly Public Safety Appropriations and Floor in January. All all unanimously, I think it moved up to floor sixty-four to zero. Since that bill was a two-year bill, it's now in the Senate. It'll kind of wait for all the new bills to catch up. So we would expect that bill to be heard in the Senate Policy Committee, probably in the May to June timeframe. So in that in that time, the the author, Ms. Ms. Winn, can continue to work with Policy Committee and staff and make any modifications, gather support for for her measure. So that's kind of where where that bill sits right now. And then as it relates to other legislation, tomorrow is the bill introduction deadline for new bills. So as of this morning, there were about eleven hundred new bills that have been introduced with the legislature convened at the beginning of January. I anticipate that by time the desks close on Friday, that we'll probably have doubled that number. So I I anticipate we'll probably see another close to thousand bills introduced today and tomorrow. So really kind of setting the tone for what we can expect to see this year. Just really early, looking ahead at bills that are probably going to be impactful to the city and local government there, but we're either seeing or being talked about. There continue to be bills related to land use. Assemblymember Friedman has reintroduced her bill, which would eliminate parking minimums related to housing developments, particularly in dense urban locations. So that will continue to be a topic of discussion. I think we're going to see some bills in response to local recent news articles, probably most recently dealing with CEQA as as it relates to housing developments that we saw coming out of Berkeley and UC Berkeley earlier this week, where where CEQA was successfully used, not only to pause a housing development, but also to limit incoming enrollment for freshmen at UC Berkeley. So I think we'll have probably given the geographic location, we'll probably see Senator Weiner, Assemblymember Ting, some some prominent Democrats look at that issue. Obviously, CEQA, as it relates to housing, has been a conversation topic for a long time. It really hasn't been significant movement there. I think also we'll probably anticipate in the coming weeks to see bills that modify SB nine, particularly as it relates to the ability of local governments to approve their own ordinances for implementing that. And there have been a few high-profile, you know, instances in in cities around the state that have probably taken a little more liberties than the legislature would like. So I think we can probably anticipate those types of bills coming through. Similar to the budget, I think there's going to be a focus on public safety. We've seen a number of bills introduced already that would propose to amend Prop forty-seven. You may recall that increased, in part, that increased the limit on on certain nonviolent crimes, particularly as it relates to to theft and shoplifting. So I think that in response to these retail crime rings, there's going to be additional focus on that as as well as other kind of items to to get at, you know, some of the increasing public safety issues that are popping up around the state. And then lastly, I did want to touch on, there probably will continue to be COVID-related legislation. We've seen bill already introduced as it relates to public meetings, the requirements to continue to provide telephone, you know, telephone access during public meetings, similar to last year's three thirty-nine Lee. I think we're going to, we have seen bills related to vaccine requirements for both schools and employers. So those bills will continue to be topics of discussion throughout this year. And then also, I think we'll continue to see legislation related to the use of public spaces for things like parklets, retail and restaurant expansions in public right-of-ways, alcohol licenses, those types of things. And then lastly, I would note this afternoon, the governor is supposed to release his endemic strategy for COVID. So I anticipate that we'll see additional COVID-related measures being put down by the administration on how they type, hope to kind of move us out of the current pandemic phase into more of an endemic phase. And so with that, I I see their hands raised, so I'm happy to answer any any questions on any of these items.
Thanks, Casey. That was a lot. Subcommittee member Sarmiento and Pinalosa.
I think David might have been before me. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that, Casey, for that presentation and that information. The question I had in regards to the library grants that you said were going to be available. I know you you mentioned it was library infrastructure and improvements grants. Do you foresee this as some as being something that we could grants, monies available that we could potentially use for library like additional libraries, new libraries, expansion of of not necessarily infra- improvement of current libraries, but new libraries? I mean, I'm not sure how, if that would be tight regulations and what exactly you could use it for.
Yeah, ba- based on our conversations with the state library around this grant program, I think there's about four hundred and thirty million available statewide. It seems like the focus from the state library is going to be on kind of making health and safety improvements to existing facilities. So whether it be HVAC, aging buildings, those types of things to existing infrastructure. I believe that I'll have to go back and check the guidelines. I believe that new facilities are eligible, but based on the conversations that we're hearing, it it seems like staff is probably putting more of an emphasis on getting the existing facilities up to up to a reasonable standard. That that said, I should also note that that the city would be, each each individual library facility is able to submit their own grant. So it's not as though it would need to be a a grant submission for, you know, multiple multiple facilities at once. So there could be options of submitting, you know, two, four, six, ten grant applications in order to address the specific need at specific facilities.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, just that's something important that to to me, just because our our we are very, very library short, along with open space short, really. But library is something that we we I know that there's been a kind of a collective desire amongst my colleagues in the City Council to really expand our library system. So thank you for that.
Thanks. Subcommittee Member Sarmiento, sorry. Fighting the urge to say Mayor Sarmiento there.
That's fine. You can you can say this, that works too. Listen, thanks, Casey. That, yeah, that 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 was a good overview. I'll just kind of reiterate what I said to Leslie and Dan and Lisa. To the extent that, you know, and you did a nice job of, you know, kind of, you know, relating everything back to San Ana, right? You know, what we have before us. So and maybe, you know, what we do going forward is on updates on things that we're doing that, you know, we may have ongoing efforts with you and your help. So so, yeah, forty, forty-five, almost forty-six billion in in surplus. That's a big number, man. So, you know, to the extent we can get some down here, get some more down here, not to say we haven't. We've been certainly grateful, you know, on the rental assistance money, on some of the HAP money. And I know we have a very good relationship now with the new supervisor representing the district for San Anans. And so the new district two supervisor for at least, you know, the short term until the end of the year is Supervisor Foley. So we've spoken about maybe using some of the HAP money for acquisition of possible underperforming hotels and motels. We haven't done too much of that. I mean, we've done some, you know, PSHs and, you know, those are obviously on a much bigger scale. But, you know, maybe, you know, the acquisition of those. But I on the services, on monies for services, are are those, do those go to cities or do those go to counties?
Yeah, the the governor's proposal was, I'd say sparse on some of the details on how that would be implemented. Generally speaking, you know, counties provide more of the wraparound services and those types of services. However, as as we've seen on the on the HAP money, there has been an understanding that larger cities in particular are are equipped in many cases to to perform these services and then, you know, and and have the need for their services. So as those are being rolled out and as the details are being discussed by the legislature, we're definitely pushing for at a minimum for those those cities that are able to, you know, perform and deliver services on that to be eligible to receive that funding. But still, it's going to have to be kind of fleshed out over the coming months as we move into the May revise.
So so I wanted to dovetail that on to our calls that we have with the big city mayors. And obviously, the big city mayors have now grown from what was originally ten to now thirteen, just to make room for those founding cities like ours. So here's the problem, that, you know, that big, you know, the the number, the the large ten cities or the big ten cities tends to now permeate some other things. So whatever you all can do to alert us when that happens, that, you know, there's like this threshold of, you know, just the top ten. Because that that really squeezes us, squeezes us out. So I think, you know, cities that are above three hundred thousand is a good threshold to look at. And any flexibility on those dollars, you know, obviously, you know, always well-received by us. So so that's good to know. You know, and 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 just want to put on your radar, and and I know it's probably already there, you know, the the state building that we have in the Civic Center. So, you know, any help with DGE and the governor's staff to, you know, move them along on this. I mean, they, I think we submitted something a couple of years ago, but it went off the radar. And when we met, you know, a couple of, you know, two or three months ago with them, they were like, you know, you know, what what state building? So, you know, I think their eye was off the ball a little bit, but maybe if there's a way you can, you know, we can refocus them. I know we're talking to our legislative delegation, both, you know, Umber and Daly, and they both seem to be very supportive. I think Umber was even considering doing a spot bill for us to go ahead and and work that angle of it. But, you know, to whatever you can kind of keep that on things to monitor and, you know, and things to push, whatever you need from us to support you on that. And and finally, you know, I I heard that there was a a proposed bill, and I'm not sure if it was Rubio or or somebody else, about conversion of golf courses to, you know, park space. So, you know, I know we have a very large golf course in, you know, in the city. We actually have two, but one of them that, you know, is owned by our friends in Garden Grove. And so, you know, look, I I'd like to learn more about that bill and whether it has any future. But I know that there's, there could be some money behind it that we could, you know, we could use for acquisition, for maintenance, you know, whatever the issue is. But if you can, maybe track that for us.
Yeah, can can definitely do so on that. There was a there was a bill introduced last year that that didn't advance at the beginning of this year, but it's been reintroduced. But I'm happy to send information on that over to through staff.
Whose bill is that?
That's Christina Garcia.
Garcia. All right. Well, listen, I I also wanted to tell the committee and everybody on the phone, I've got a hard stop at two o'clock. I apologize, small bump off. But, you know, I mean, the 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 rest of the committee can move forward. But but thank you, Casey.
Thank you. Casey, very quickly on my end, I support all of the items that were discussed by the Subcommittee members. And particularly in my district, I'm interested in seeing how we can partner up with the state to have some acquisition of motels, particularly if there's any interest or appetite, you know, around building student housing. We have a community college here in the city, and I think that just makes sense. And there's a a big need for that here in the city of San Ana. So let me know if there's any information out there that we can bring at the city level to help make that happen with our county partners.
Okay, I'd be happy to do so. I I do know that the Community College District had submitted an application at the state level for planning dollars last year. So I know that that's on their radar, but yeah, happy to follow up with you on that.
Got it. Thank you. And if there's nothing else, Casey, I can move on to the next agenda item.
I'm I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so Agenda Item Three is going to be receiving a a quick update, Tony, from the League of California Cities.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the opportunity. Just real quickly, that Christina Garcia bill, AB six seven two, that golf course bill, I believe that bill is dead. I'm sorry, that bill is dead for this session. But I'll double-check. The bill number is AB six seven two, and it was a a grant program for converting golf courses into housing. Okay, so real briefly, in terms of what's happening at the League of California Cities, our Board of Directors unanimously adopted an opposed position on an upcoming ballot measure that's still qualifying. It's sponsored by the California Business Roundtable. It would dramatically change how cities are able to raise taxes, fees, extend fees. It would prohibit voters from providing feedback on how that fee money or tax money should be spent. It would invalidate the upland decision, which requires a simple majority vote on special taxes. So because of that infringement on local control, we've adopted an opposed position. You may have seen an action alert that I sent out earlier this month. If your city is considering adopting an opposed position, we encourage you to do so. And if you need me to be at a council, please let me know. I'm happy to provide more information on this ballot measure. Again, it's the California Business Roundtable ballot measure that would impact city financial authority. In terms of a- activity of what the Art Division Board of Directors is doing, we adopted a unanimous support position on AB fifteen ninety-five. That's authored by our own Sharon Quirk Silva. This is the bill that would implement the Orange County Veterans Cemetery. I believe all the cities in Orange County passed a resolution in support. That movement is now a bill, and so we're going to be asking cities to join us in support. And that goes AB fifteen ninety-five. In terms of what's happening on the public safety front, it was already mentioned, the 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 housing introduction deadline is this Friday. So we'll know by this weekend what is going to be real and what's not in terms of proposals. But some of the topics that are percolating up to the top, of course, is is going to be housing. It's continued, it continues to be housing. We understand that Assemblymember Tim Grayson has a couple, quite a few proposals when it comes to housing that haven't materialized into bills. But two proposals are very interesting. One is, it's called the First Look at Home Ownership. It would allow first-time homebuyers to essentially take a crack at buying a house before a hedge fund does. Sounds great on policy. It it certainly would encourage first home ownership. We're just not sure exactly how that would work. But we're going to be taking a look at that proposal when it comes about. Another one of Mr. Grayson's proposals is to, if a city waives certain development fees, the state would essentially reimburse us for those fees. So we don't mind who pays for our fees, as long as somebody's paying for the fees. When that proposal materializes into into an actual bill, we'll take a look at it. As was already mentioned, Prop forty-seven, the early release ballot measure that was supported by and enacted by the voters in two thousand and fourteen, several bills to do several things. Some, most of the bills are piecemeal approaches in reforming Prop forty-seven. And there's a bill out there to flat-out repeal Prop forty-seven. So our Board of Directors is going to be taking a look at all of those bills at its next meeting. In terms of federal advocacy, we're going to be very, we're going to have a big presence at the National League of Cities at their conference in March. We're asking cities that have an extensive federal advocacy program like yourselves to provide a specific request in terms of what to ask the feds. We don't want to just go there and say we need more money for housing and homeless and all that. Everybody's saying that. We we would love to have some specifics. So if your city has some specifics that they could provide me, I'm happy to float that to headquarters. The other piece is the endemic program that the governor is proposing. If you have any concerns business-wise or residence-wise and how that endemic should proceed, filter that to me and happy to forward that to headquarters. With that, there is my very quick and brief presentation. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Tony. I do have a quick question for you. I was on a recent CalCities call, and I heard something about did did CalCities create a model so folks can look at how much census funding they're actually using if they did not meet a particular threshold when it came to the census?
I I know we're starting to look at that. I know we had that that first call that you were a part of. I'm going to have to follow up with our lobbyists to see what exactly is happening now. I we did get a briefing that we're getting that data, but I got to follow up in terms of real next steps. So if I can email your staff and you directly, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, yeah. Please do email us. And then can you also keep me updated on the first look of, you know, having a resident have be prioritized over some LLC, but in in terms of homeownership?
Yes, definitely. Like I mentioned, it's it's a proposal that's in rumor mill right now. But yes, when it materializes into a bill, come this deadline on Friday, yes, absolutely. We'll be we'll be floating that to all all cities for sure.
Thank you. Any other Subcommittee members have any questions for Tony? I don't see any hands.
Thank you very much.
But I don't, Chairwoman.
Thank you. All right. So thanks, Tony. We're going to move on to item number four, which is going to be presented by Daniel Solto from the City Manager's Office. which is going to be presented by Daniel Solko from the City Manager's Office.
Good afternoon, Subcommittee Members. We are going to speed through a quick presentation to give you an update on a competitive request for proposals process that we are concluding to select the city's state legislative lobbyist. Okay. So so generally, the city is looking for a state lobbyist. Generally, the lobbyists will conduct legislative activities, research and analysis, guiding the city through setting our legislative priorities that can take the form of a document like our legislative platform or updating our guiding principles. The lobbyists will also provide us with ongoing updates on legislation and any other activities happening at the state level. And as our lobbyists, they will be serving as a liaison between the city and our government officials in Sacramento. We submitted or released a request for qualifications on December twenty third and left the application period open for five weeks. It closed on January twenty first and the proposals were evaluated shortly thereafter. We did receive three responses after having submitted notices to two hundred fifty firms. And the three firms that we received responses from are on your screen. After the Evaluation Committee, which was composed of four members of the City Manager's Office, we ranked the proposals as follows. And the staff recommendation at this time is to proceed with recommending to the city council a three year agreement with Townsend Public Affairs to continue serving as a city state lobbyist. The staff selected Townsend Public Affairs based upon their experience in working with local governments on lobbyists and their ability to be nimble in responding to requests in the city. Up notes, they have been working with the city for twenty two years and have helped secure millions, millions of dollars in funding for projects all over the city from parks, public safety, the zoo and more. The cost proposals on your screen, we would propose a a three year agreement with a one year extension. And at this time for the subcommittee, we have two options for you to either affirm staff's recommendation to proceed with presenting an agreement to the city council for approval. Or if you'd like, you can also schedule a special meeting of the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee to interview the the three proposers. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Daniel. That was very quick and I appreciated. Subcommittee members, do you have any questions or concerns? Subcommittee Member Penalosa.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lopez. I have no questions or concerns. Thank you for that, Daniel. I would very much, I don't know if a motion is required, but I would very much make a motion to move the staff's recommendation forward to the city council.
There's a motion on the floor. Subcommittee Member Sorrento.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that. I the only the only all I would add is that, you know, again, we, you know, as updates are provided, that they really tailor it to San Ana, right? That that's kind of something, you know, Daniel, we can work on as a committee with you and really work with our advocates to kind of, you know, not just deliver general updates. You know, they can start with a broad, but really narrow it down. It's okay, this is how these broad topics relate to you, and we really don't need to know what people are doing in Washington. I want to know what's what opportunities there are for us as they relate to, you know, residents of San Ana. So that's kind of what we need to do with, you know, advocates at all level. I mean, I've seen that done well at some other agencies. We just need to, we need to kind of sharpen it up here. But I know, look, there there's been a lot of good relationships with 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 our advocates, both the state and federal, so we'll get there. Thanks.
Thank you. So Madam Secretary, do you want to take role?
Yes. So we have a second, we have a motion by Penalosa and a second by the mayor or by Subcommittee Member Sorrento. So I will go ahead and take role. Subcommittee Member Sorrento.
Yes.
Vice Chair Penalosa.
Yes.
And Chair Member Lopez.
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like a unanimous vote for the motion to move the TPA contract for a vote at the next or the future conference meeting.
All right, everybody, I'm going to have to bump off, so thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda is going to be discussing and determining future meeting dates. And I know that we are a little over two PM, and I want to be respectful of everybody's times. So if staff can possibly work with us via email to set some reoccurring date, I would really appreciate that. Subcommittee Member Penalosa, do you have any questions or concerns regarding that suggestion?
I I I have no questions or concerns, Chairwoman. I would appreciate that if staff could work with us directly for available for our availability, but I would I guess the just the general direction I'd like to provide is that we initially, as we move into this legislative cycle, meet at least once a month. Moving to start, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, just so that we can make sure that I know there's a lot of bills coming through and that we could stay on top of all of them. So that'd be the only comment I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. You're welcome. I agree with that, and staff can let us know to what other agencies are doing since this is my first time really chairing a legislative Subcommittee, so I would appreciate it to see what other folks are doing if they're meeting more than once. So that's going to be that.
Chair Lopez?
Yes.
I do have a quick input on the, according to the bylaws that I sent over, and we'd have to look at that as well. There is a outline that it's quarterly meetings. So I don't know if that's going to be adjusted, then we probably would have to look at the bylaws being amended as well.
Okay, so then bring back the bylaws to be amended so that we can have flexibility in terms of when we're meeting and also how we're meeting, because I read in the bylaws that we're supposed to be meeting at City Hall. And clearly, we're having our term meeting, so I want that in the bylaws to be amended as well.
Okay.
Thank you. So that's going to bring us to the end of our business calendar. Are there any Subcommittee Member comments? Subcommittee Member Penalosa?
None at the moment. Just thank you, everybody, for the taking the time to present to us.
Thank you. Likewise, thank you, folks, for being here. I'm sure this is going to be a learning process for me, and so I'm excited to learn alongside of you and bring some money to the city of San Ana and support to the residents of the city of San Ana. And the next regular meeting will be held at a date and time to be determined by the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee. Thank you, everyone.